Okay, if everyone will please take their seats. We will begin this section of the form with the county commissioners. In District Two, we have Bill Miller versus Matt Svalant. District Three, Jim Branstad versus Brett Curry. District Four, Bob Rennie versus Scott Westman. And Bill, we'll begin with you with your one-minute opening statement.
Hello. I'm Bill Miller. I represent District Two, which has changed because of the census. So, two districts were added and one deleted from what I had. Going forward, we, as county board members, we try to keep the tax levies low. And we have succeeded in doing that in the last three and a half years that I have been there. Some of the things, as far as what we also work on, as far as what I'm concerned to work on, county parks and trails is a big thing with me. And that leads to getting grants and getting things done on the county level. When there's free money out there, we'd like to use it. And another thing is making sure our-
Thank you, Bill.
-department heads have the assets they need.
Thank you, Bill. Matt, your opening statement?
Hi there. I'm Matt Svalant. I'm running for county commissioner in District Two. I'm a lifelong member, well, I should say, I was born and raised in Watin One County. So, I've got a lot at stake there. I don't want to say how old I am, but it's been for more than a half a century. I married my high school sweetheart. We have three children and one grandson. A lot of fun having grandchildren. I've worked a few different jobs through my career. I'm currently employed at the Watin One County Highway Department. I've been there for nearly eighteen years. I'm a first-generation farmer, and we live near Olden, Minnesota. I just want to let everybody know that if I'm elected, I want to be their voice for you, for a strong community. If you have any questions, you can always feel free to call me, get ahold of me.
Thank you, Matt. Jim?
Hi, I'm Jim Branstad. I'm running for Watin One County Commissioner, District Three, which is basically the west half of St. James. I've lived in Watin One County for more than fifty years. I've always had a strong desire to serve the public. My six years of experience as a county commissioner, and having served many years on the school board and the hospital board, have helped me to develop strong leadership. It takes leadership and willingness to work with others to be a successful board member. And I feel I bring that quality to our current county board. There's more to being a county commissioner than two board meetings a month. I currently serve on the Human Services Board, Chair of the Library Board, Extension Committee, Region Nine Development Commission, and Wellspring and the Negotiations Committee. In addition, I'm a voice for Watin One County on the Minnesota Rural Counties. And I am also on the Environment and Natural Resources Committee.
Thank you, Jim. Brett?
Hi, I'm Brett Curry. I'm running for District Three County Commissioner also. Been born and raised in St. James for, been here for sixty years, believe it or not. Been married for thirty-two years. Started a business in nineteen eighty-nine and incorporated it in 'oh-four. And, kind of looking for a reason to get out of it at this point and see what becoming a county commissioner is all about. So, I guess that's about it.
Bob?
All right, I gotta read fast. My name's Bob Rennie. I'm running for Watin One County Commissioner, District Four, which is basically the east half of St. James. I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised in Watin One County, married to Vonda Now Rennie. We have two daughters, four granddaughters. I'm, again, running for commissioner as I enjoyed the opportunity these past four years. And I'd be honored to serve another term. I've enjoyed it. It's given me the knowledge and experience and workings of the position. And I'm still retired, and I have time to commit to the job, and it takes a lot of time. I'm currently serving as the board chair, and will continue to listen to address your concerns. I have a good working relationship with the department heads and employees. With the help of the other commissioners, we've been able to keep the budget and tax levy down without compromising county services. I look forward to dedicating my time and experience-
Thank you, Bob.
...to ensure Watin One County remains a strong and sustainable community for future generations.
Don't worry, Scott, I'll give you an extra thirty seconds.
I don't think I need any.
Scott Westman?
Well, thank you to everyone that made this event possible. I'm Scott Westman, a lifelong resident of Watin One County, running for District Four County Commissioner. My campaign slogan is faith, family, and freedom. Our society is straying away from those principles, and we need to do what we can on a local level to preserve them. I will provide bold leadership, conservative economic policies, and social openness. I look forward to using my thirty-three years of experience in public works, agriculture, and business in being your District Four County Commissioner. Thank you.
Okay, we'll begin the questions with Bill. Question number one. What do you feel are the roles of a county commissioner? What do you see as the main challenge of this role?
The role of the county commissioner is to represent the people of the county and try to appease some of their, um, what do I want to say it? To try to make things work. Again, would you repeat the question?
I will. What do you feel are the roles of a county commissioner? What do you see as the main challenge of this role?
Again, the role of the county commissioner is to represent the county residents. As far as the, uh, I'm just not having a good time here. I gotta explain something to you folks. I had hip surgery Thursday, a total hip done, and I'm getting flustered up here. I'm gonna pass on that question.
Matt, same question.
Well, I think, obviously, I agree with Bill that you would be the voice for the people. So, if there's any questions or concerns about the county, roads, what have you, we're the people to call. And then, with those issues, I think we have to deal with the department heads and whatever the problems may be, come up with good ideas to get everybody appeased and happy and move Also, to govern the money that the people making or paying taxes, try to keep that as low as possible, but yet get everything done that needs to be done.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
You know, we are elected by district, but I think our roles are more as a board as a whole. We have to look out for the residents of Watin One County, not just the residents of the district of which we are elected from. So, I think that's the biggest thing that our position has to do, is to work with each other on the county board, to solve any issues or problems, and to work forward to making this a better place to live and to work. I think one of the biggest challenges that we have on the county board is, always has to do with budgeting. And we've done an excellent job on our board, as Bill mentioned, to hold our levy down. And I really take pride in the fact that we can all work together on our board to get that accomplished. So, that is one of the challenges. And I think another great challenge, as mentioned earlier by Paul, is we have to look at what we can do for housing in our county in order to attract new businesses.
Brett, same question?
Yeah, I think, basically, the same thing. Jim's saying a lot there. It's looking over everybody, making sure everybody's getting along, and everything's working the way it's supposed to be. Watching how money's budgeted through, running a business is, you know, it's a pretty big business, the county, so I would think that we would have a lot of things similar to it. And getting on boards and meeting new people and seeing how things work, so.
Bob?
Um, being, Bill and Jim and I and the other commissioners are always together, so a lot of these answers are gonna be kind of the same, because we all work together and try to figure things out, do our roles, challenges. And I guess, yeah, we represent the county, we represent the people out there. So, we listen and try to keep everything in good working order. We try to engage with our employees and with our department heads. And our challenges, I say, like they said, we've tried to stay within our budget, we've done a very good job of that. And we just keep working together. I mean, that's just the thing, to work together and work things out.
Scott?
Could you please repeat the question?
What do you feel are the roles of the county commissioner? And what do you see as the main challenge of this role?
I would say to represent the district you're elected to. I mean, you're the sounding board for the district, and not just your district, but the entire county. And the challenges, I believe, is, you know, jobs and economic growth. Not only, that's a good tagline, is economic growth or new businesses, but also to preserve the businesses we have, help them stay in business, maybe with succession plans, or, you know, just helping businesses stay solvent. Thank you.
Matt will begin. Question two with you. What expertise are you bringing to the position?
Well, as a commissioner, I don't have any expertise, but I do, I did graduate from the School of Hard Knocks. Like I say, I've had many different jobs through my career, and I've spent twenty years working for the county, so I kind of know the ins and outs of how the public relates to the workers of the county. I feel, for the most part, I've gotten good reception for the jobs I've done for the county already, and I just want to represent the county in a different manner as becoming a county commissioner.
Okay, Jim?
I think the biggest expertise that I can bring to the county is that I've worked on county board, but I've also worked on many other boards, and realize what it takes to be a good board member, that you have to work and have to compromise, and you have to get along with your fellow board members to get the things accomplished. So, then I think that I do a good job at that. I also pride myself in being a listener, and trying to hear what people have to say, trying to understand what they're trying to get to and get at, and to help people move forward in solving their individual problems.
And Brett?
Well, I don't know if I'm any expertise at anything, but anything I would help with would be the construction part of things, and how roads are and put together. Yeah, I don't know. It's, I'm kind of flustered. I'm not much of a person that sits in front of people, talks neither, so. I think getting on the board, I mean, I get along with everybody, I think I can talk with everybody too, so. It's, obviously, would be a whole bunch of different things if it was just four of us sitting there talking and having a meeting. But, yeah, I know the School of Hard Knocks also, that's how I made my business, so.
And Bob?
Um, one thing, I started out working for Keels Electric, and I had to deal with the public there, deal with people, so I, you know, you get to communicate with people, and that's helped me communicating with people within the county. Then I started working for the city, worked there for thirty-three years, and I was department head for the last five years, so you deal with a lot of people, you go to a lot of council meetings. So, I had kind of a handle on everything before I got this commissioner job, so I guess I'm used to dealing with the public, listening to their concerns and stuff. And I'm also, I just got back from a meeting this afternoon over in Slaton, I'm on the Rural Minnesota Energy Board. So, my experience with Keels Electric helped me with there, when we were trying to keep our county rates down for electricity and solving some problems. So, I think that will help the county a lot.
Thank you. And Scott?
Um, I've, expertise probably none. Anybody who claims to be an expert typically, I don't believe they are, but I worked in public works for thirty-three years. We have a fourth-generation century farm. I've worked with agriculture, worked in business, so I have all that background. Yeah.
And Bill?
As far as expertise, I think the main thing I bring is experience in the general work world. I worked for Corporate America for twenty-some years. There, I learned money management, which then again, this past year or year and a half, we redid our bonds so that we have a real low interest rate now, so that, again, helped the taxpayers. I farmed part-time for over thirty-some years. I currently rent it out, so I'm part of the community. A lot of that farming was done in Watin One County. I also coached for twenty-some years, which, in that job, there's a lot of teamwork involved. And as we work with the department heads, there's a lot of teamwork needed, and we're seeming to get a lot of that done. And as Jim had stated too, I like to listen. I'll listen to you, but I'm not afraid to make a decision.
Jim will begin. Question three with you. If the state cuts dollars to the county for roads and other service areas, what would your plan be to deal with a reduced budget?
Well, let us hope that they don't. The state is getting a surplus, as we all know, and I can't foresee that they would cut dollars for roads and bridges. But if, in the event that they did, which wouldn't make any sense to me, we would just have to adjust and set our priorities as to what roads need to work on the most, what bridges need to be replaced the soonest. So, you would just have to set priorities in order to meet that challenge. And that's what we would have to do, is sit down as a entire board, listen to our department heads, listen to our county engineer, and find out what we can do with the dollars that we have.
Brett?
Yeah, that's a good question. I would hope that they wouldn't cut it neither, but, um, again, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of infrastructure that needs fixing around in our area. And I would imagine the only thing you could do is slow down on some of it, you wouldn't be able to do as big a projects as possible, tend to the ones that really need to be fixed the best, so hopefully, they have plenty of money out there that we can get and get things done.
Bob?
Um, a lot of things that Jim said I agree on. I mean, hopefully, it would not cut any money, but, you know, if they did, I guess we rely on our county engineer to work things out. She's done an excellent job already figuring our roads out, and I know our roads need a lot of work, and we've got a lot of progress done this year. We'll continue to do that, and if we do happen to get cut, I would pretty much guarantee I would not be in favor of cutting any of our other services, keep them where they're at right now, and try to figure out a solution to our county roads.
Okay, Scott?
I'm a bit of disadvantaged without knowing the budget, or if there's any kind of rainy day funds, or how that, what that might look like. But, you know, my day-to-day stuff, we're faced challenges, you know, with the equipment breaking down, and budgets and things like that. I mean, I would certainly think I could defer some of the projects, some of the equipment purchasing, and there's always a place to tighten your belt at some point, so.
Bill?
A question again, please.
If the state cuts dollars to the county for roads and other service areas, what would your plan be to deal with a reduced budget?
As times are right now, with the depression setting, and I can see a reduced budget, but to get ahead of that, we have established an equipment and maintenance five-year plan, so we know when our equipment needs to be replaced and how often it does. So, we've got pretty much enough idea of how much money we're spending. And then, along with that, our county engineer, we have went to gravel road versus stabilization of a gravel road, where there, you, the stabilization of a gravel road is when you add recycled tar to it. What that has done, instead of having to grade every time it rains, we can grade those roads once a year. That's a cost savings. So, there's things that we're implementing now already to reduce those costs. Thank you.
Matt?
Well, I'd have to say it's similar to farming. So, if you have a low price on corn or whatever, you kind of cut back on your input cost, whether that be putting out your, you want to get a new combine this year, or new road grader, maybe put that out till next year. Hopefully, there's enough money in the budget to keep the roads in shape, and at least, if there's not, you can get your high-traffic roads in shape or kept up. Maybe put off, you know, if you have job openings or something like that, put off a new hire for six months, or see what the budget's gonna do next year. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. Brett, we'll start this one with you. If elected as a leader in the community, what opportunities would you take to assure all residents of the county that they are welcome, important, and feel vital to the growth and development of the county?
Well, I think you just talk and listen to people and absorb what they have to say and take that to their meetings and see if there's something we can do. Yeah, I don't know. It's, I think a lot of it's just sitting back and listening and putting in your input, getting along with everybody, and resolving some issues.
Bob, same question?
Um, yeah, I feel, make everybody welcome to the county, come in, and if they have any questions, contact us as commissioners. Feel welcome to call at any time. And what else to say besides just get ahold of us and talk and work things out? If you have any questions, we'll work them out.
Scott?
Um, yeah, I feel all residents should feel welcome. I think everybody has a fundamental right to a better life and better themselves, and if there's a way for the county through the human services or outreach programs to help people assimilate to the county, that would be, that'd be great.
Bill, same question?
Scott brought up a good point with the human services. It's something that the state mandates. I get, I hear a lot of commotion about it as far as how much money we spend on it, but it's mandated, so it's something you take care of. Another area, how we can help the public, we work with the, we partner with the small communities and the larger city and our county, trying to work towards different goals. We provide money for EDA, and that's a surplus money, so they can go out and spend a little bit of that. The, the, to make people welcome, I think that's just, that just happens in rural America. I don't see such a problem there. I hear a lot about multicultural, but I've got a lot of multicultural friends. I don't see that as a major problem. I think, as far as being welcome, what the county does, I listed a couple of things, they are welcome.
Thank you. Matt?
Could you repeat the question, please?
If elected as a leader in the community, what opportunities would you take to assure all residents of the county feel that they are welcome, important, and vital to the growth and development of the county?
Well, growing up in this colony, I think we have a pretty unique colony that, I mean, there was ethnic people when I was growing up, and I don't know that, the people that I hung around anyway were very welcoming to that, that style. I think the county's doing a great job with that. I think they could maybe expand on some things, but I think they're on the right track for what they have got going on right now.
Jim?
Well, I think it's important to get to know your neighbor. Who are your neighbors? How do you interact with your neighbors? My wife and I have been active in this community in a couple of organizations, one called Welcoming Communities. Are there ways that we can do a better job of welcoming people into our community? And another one that we've been a really big part of is the uniting cultures and the multicultural fiesta. I think by listening to people, asking questions, getting to know your neighbor, as I said, and finding ways that we can work together makes us a welcoming community.
At this time, we'll take any other questions from the audience. If you have one, just raise your hand and, okay. I have been handed a few. In the past two years in the county department, oh, excuse me, in the past two years in the county highway department, approximately ten employees have left due to poor working conditions and management. A lot of time and money was spent training them. What will you do to retain employees? And we'll start with Brett.
Well, number one, I think you gotta find out the reason why they're leaving. You know, unfortunately, you get one bad egg in a bunch, they all sour on you. And I've seen it through years of our business, just finding the help that can get along and get things done is way easier said than done, let me tell you. And it's not just always a money thing, it's just some people are there to cause issues. And I think the big thing there is you just, you gotta, you gotta find them out, you gotta call them out and go through the repercussions that it takes, so.
Bob?
I would disagree with the statement about poor management. I do not think we have poor management. I think we have, excuse me, excellent management. And I think some of the reasons for some of the people leaving, they just, they don't like taking directions, taking orders from our management to get the job done. And I think we've gotten rid of a few bad apples, and it's been a good thing for the county. And going forward, we will hire people that want to work, work hard to improve our county.
Scott?
Um, I guess you would have to try to get to the root of the problem. I mean, talk to the, whoever is the county engineer- I mean, talk to the, whoever is the county engineer and whoever else is in charge of personnel out there and, you know, take the necessary action. And, you know, I've, I've heard, I've heard the same, that there's some culture issues out there and, you know, we'll just have to try to figure it out and, and try to make it a, make it a desired employer instead of a place that has some issues as we, as we speak and hopefully, if we can change the culture and get it so people want to work there, maybe we'll have more applicants and with more applicants, you may get better personnel.
Bill?
I'm somewhat, we'll go along with what Brett said earlier about calling them out. Some of the movement out there was because they were called out and they didn't like the, the management style, but that's the freedom of the work. I mean, you, if you don't like it, you can leave. Also, salary is a big thing for Watton County. We cannot compete with Blue Earth County. We can't even compete with Brown County when it comes to the salaries. We do the best we can. We had, I'm on the negotiating team. We, we negotiated with the union. We offered to drop the lower and add one higher, so everybody got a raise, but they, they weren't concerned with that, they were concerned with something else, so that didn't happen. We try to make it the best we can for our workers, but salary is a big issue. I can hire, or we can hire a mechanic for 28, $30 an hour and they can get 39, $40 down the road. It's a tough, it's a tough go. So what do you provide? You provide, you provide all the amenities that we do as a county. You've got health insurance, you've got, and right there-
Thank you, Bill.
You add that up, adds up to another $11 an hour.
I hear some of the answers here and I agree with some and I disagree with some. I agree that you have to come get to the root of the problem. Pay probably is a big thing, but it shouldn't only be for the new hires, it should also be for the experienced workers that are doing the work for you. Anything after that, I probably should decline the answer anymore.
Thank you. Jim?
I know the county has brought in outside expertise to meet with our county highway department employees to find out what are the situations that cause the concerns, what causes the rift between employees, what causes the rift between employees and management. And so we've been working hard to try to solve this problem. I think as Bob said, I think our leadership has been excellent. I think we have a few people within our county highway department that do not want to see changes made that would improve the situation and that makes it difficult for working conditions. And there really isn't much we can do if they're not gonna get on board if we've tried to do everything we can, but if they don't get on board, that you can, the problem just continues to persist.
The next question from the audience, it's a two-part question. As a county commissioner, what do you feel is your role? And part two, what are your top three priorities and how would you implement these as a county commissioner? And we'll start with Bob.
My role as a county commissioner would be to keep the county operating as a well-oiled machine, keeping all our departments up to standard and a big issue is our human services. That'd be one of the things, there's, there's a big mental health problem going on in our county, which we are dealing with. Another thing would be our roads, which I think we are doing an excellent job with. And probably thirdly, a big issue lately, the last few years, has been our county ditches. We're spending a lot of money on our ditches to help out the farmers, which is, which is going well, so a lot of the county farmers are on board.
Okay, Scott?
Um, a role I would say would be the sounding board for your district and all county residents and also be the watchdog for your tax dollars to make sure that they're being spent wisely and prudently. And the top three things I would say would be, one big thing for me is accessibility for the county, the website, there's some things that are lacking there. Accessibility to the meetings, I was just on there earlier today and some of the agendas aren't posted until after the meeting and even to be able to watch the meetings, doesn't necessarily need to be live, but maybe at least have them recorded so you can watch them back later. So if there's something that pertains to you or you're concerned about or passionate about, maybe you can go to the next meeting and, but you'd have the opportunity to see what's going on. And of course, economic growth, economic preservation, and just the community-oriented projects, you know, there's a lot of stuff that is, seems like it isn't necessarily geared for the community, it's just more, you know, maybe just isn't community-oriented. Thank you.
Bill?
I look as my role to represent my district and the county as a whole and to keep the county fiscally positive. That's, that's a chore. Also, the top three priorities, I think first, first, I, it kinda goes back to that question before, I, I think it's really important for our county to be a good place to work. That's how you retain the employees and, and except for that one little blurb we got going, I think we're doing a pretty good job of that. It is a good place to work. Again, roads and bridges have to be maintained. We're working on it, we're giving the people the equipment to do it. By giving the people the equipment to do that work, we're cutting down the time that it takes to do that work so we can do more work out in the county. And lastly would be human services. I think with the, with, the mental health thing is a, really a big thing and, and I can see our sheriff's department having a tough time with it because being somewhat confused, do you do this, do you do that, or how do you approach this situation? I think it's, it's, there's a lot to be said there. That would be my top three priorities.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, I think there's probably more than three, but I've only got two. Number one would be to listen to the public and their concerns, try to get, listen to their opinions and if it's possible, act on them. Also, I believe it's important for the management and commissioners to listen to the employees. They've got an opinion on things too and they should be heard. Thank you.
Jim?
I think one of the things that has not been touched on is a role here, to be a promoter of Watton One County, to invite people to move into Watton One County. We're seeing people moving from the Twin Cities to outstate areas. So we want to work with legislators to see if we can find more revenue to help to improve the amenities so that we can attract people to our county. And along that line, I think updating parks and trails has been a big priority of mine because people that want to move into your county look for things like that. Broadband, we are now working with Christensen Communications to try to improve broadband and internet services in the rural parts of our county. That's another way to how to attract people. And in terms of just playing, providing good services and managing the budget as best you can without raising taxes. Thank you.
Brett?
Well, I think the role is, the way I look at it, it's, I'm working for you. I'm looking for you, the people, to vote me in, so that's the first step of that. And then it's, I guess I always felt that the, working for the county was always a good job through the years and I, I wonder why there's been a lot of turnover out there and, and maybe help find what's going on and, and get, get it back the way it was 'cause there's a lot of, a lot of good things out here and, yeah, hopefully be able to do some good that way. Thanks.
All right, we'll now have the one-minute closing statement and we'll start with Scott.
Thank you for the questions. I believe Watton One County is a great place to live and raise a family. I will do everything possible to ensure we are making good deals and are prudent with our tax dollars. As this is a job interview, I believe I am the best, most experienced candidate for the job with conservative economic policies, social openness, and bold leadership. I would appreciate your vote on November 8th. Thank you and God bless America.
Thank you. Bill?
Again, thank you for the forum. If elected again, I would like to bring to the board, I, I get, I've getting, I have gotten really involved in the Association of Minnesota Counties. That's the State Commissioners Board. I'm on the Safety Committee, I ran for the President last year. What I gain there, I bring things back to the board, what works in other counties, what doesn't work in our counties. And going to the meetings, being an elected official that does their job, you need time to do the job. I am now retired and I do have the time to do the job. Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, I feel very strong that we need to get back to working for the people. I want to be that voice that will listen to you whether you're in my district or not. Your, what you're saying will not be, will not fall on deaf ears. I'll bring the issues to the board and work together and fight if needed to be, to make the most positive solution to the issues I can. I also don't wanna, I want to bring solutions to the table and not make more issues. I've been a volunteer for my whole adult life and I would love to volunteer for this position and serve the people in District Two. Thanks.
Jim?
You know, I've been asked why I have to run for this position considering that I ran two years ago for a four-year term and won. And it has to do with redistricting and the census. So consequently, here I am, running for the final two years of the position I thought I won two years ago. So that's, that's the reason that I am running. But I'm also running because I think I bring a lot to the board. My involvement in other community activities, my involvement in all kinds of county activities in terms of leadership, as Bill said, I'm also on the Environment and, and Resources Board for the Association of Minnesota Counties. I've always prided myself for being open-minded, willing to listen, and working with others for the betterment of the people that we serve in our county. And I fully appreciate your support in my reelection bid for county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett?
Well, I can tell you, I'd never thought I'd be in this position right now, but I'm kinda glad I did. It's definitely out of my realm being in front of people talking, but I've run a business for 33 years and it's been successful and I, I think, you know, listening to people and, and spreading it, you know, talking to everybody and figuring out what's going on and how to do things. I think, number one, it's a, it's a big step just to learn to see what a commissioner does. And obviously, I've never been one before, but I was never a business owner neither. When I started that, I took off and worked and made things work. And I think I can, I think I could bring that to a commissioner's job too, so.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm gonna just list a few things that we have, we have commissioners have accomplished during the last four years. Some of these have we already talked about, I'll just go through them quickly. We've improved our county parks, including new walking bridges in the process being put in at Eagle's Nest. We've got some grant money, a lot of grant money to continue the Bike Trail to Ormsby. We are upgrading the equipment at the county highway department, which got way behind schedule. Now we're on a yearly replacement schedule to keep everything up to date. We fixed our gravel roads, we talked about the base one, check out the new gravel road going out to the compo site, it's excellent. We've added a new deputy and a K-9, we've added a new supervisor at the highway department. We've kept our levees low. We're working hard to improve the broadband, especially out like towards the Odin area. Our mental health's a big issue in human services. We navigated through COVID-
Thank you. Okay, we are going to skip our next break and go right into the state representatives for 21B. We have two candidates for that, Marge Fogelman, who I will read a statement from.
Thank you St. James Chamber City Schools, EDA Rotary, Surtoma, and Community Education for sponsoring the event. And thank you everyone for attending this evening. My sincere apologies for not being able to be present as I already committed to a previous engagement. A little about myself, my name is Marge Fogelman. I have been married to my husband Michael for 25 years. We currently live south of Folda, Folda in Nobles County. Together, we have raised four children. We also own and operate two small businesses. I am a Christian. My faith is very important to me and I use my Christian conservative values to lead me in my daily life. I am a lifelong resident of Minnesota and of this district. I grew up the daughter of a farmer. I had opportunities to work at a variety of jobs growing up, which helped me hone my customer service skills. Working with my husband, owning two small businesses, I see the issues with finding and keeping employees as well as dealing with state regarding licensing and regulations. I am a fresh set of eyes and ears. I believe I will bring a common sense, real-life perspective to St. Paul to help make positive decisions for greater Minnesota. Right now, Minnesota has a huge surplus. With inflation being out of control, the higher cost of food, gas, and everyday living expenses, families are struggling and we need to have massive tax cuts to help improve the situation for Minnesota residents. We need to start holding criminals accountable and supporting police officers to do their job correctly to reduce crime. People need to feel safe at home and in their communities. We need to make sure every child receives the education they deserve, working with parents to make sure they are involved and informed to make the best education decisions for their children and to keep them focused on the main points of education and not controversial and politically-charged curriculum. I want to see free and fair elections back in Minnesota. We don't need to have a six-week voting period, no mass mailings of ballots and only have absentee ballots that are requested for appropriate reasons. Voter IDs should be required, just as it is required to drive, purchase alcohol, cigarettes, or to gamble. I am looking forward to working with other elected officials and becoming the best legislator I can be for your House District 21B. Thank you again for allowing me this opportunity to introduce myself to a few more voters in House District 21B. To all you District 21B voters, if elected, I want to represent our families, our businesses, and our communities. I want to be a conservative voice at the Capitol that will advocate for our district with commitment, honor, trust, and will listen to the constituents of our district. Together, we can have an even better Minnesota. Again, I am Marge Fogelman and I am asking for your vote in November. We also reached out to Michael Heidberger. He did not send a statement prior to tonight's events. The last candidate that we will hear from though tonight is unopposed Bill Weber. And Mr. Weber, if you'd like to come up here and speak for one to three minutes, that would be great.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here, as was said, my name is Bill Weber. I'm from Laverne, I have served in the State Senate for 10 years for District 22. Due to redistricting, now the west half of Watton One County and four townships in northwestern Martin County and the east half of Jackson County have been added to the district, little bit of it taken away in Lyon and Redwood County, and we are now Senate District 21. I am running for reelection to serve all the people of southwest Minnesota. People say to me, "Well, what's your new district like?" And I said, "You know, it's still a very homogeneous district. Agriculture is king, our food processing industries are some of our major employers, and we have rural school districts, and we have issues with our nursing homes and our healthcare, just like everyone else does." But when you're out in, in greater Minnesota, sometimes the distance makes those problems a little more serious and a little more severe. I have had the opportunity to serve with Senator Rosen, who has been your state senator, and I certainly want to thank her because she has been truly a great mentor, has served her district very well in the 20 years that she has been a state senator. You know, as we go forward, and I, first also, I also want to thank the organizers of this forum, and I want to thank all the people that are seated up here running for local office. I have, I'm a lifelong resident of Rock County in Laverne. I served for 16 years as a council member and mayor in Laverne, and then took some time off and, and ran for the State Senate in 2012 and was elected. Local government is a tremendous training ground when you get to the state capital. There have been a lot of issues that we have faced, and, you know, whether we're talking about education, whether we're talking about city government, county government, all of us unfortunately have to put up with some of the mandates that come to us from state government. State has to put up with mandates that come from the federal government. And it's a, it's a very much a real challenge. And I have really fought hard for southwest Minnesota, for local government, to try and get rid of some of those mandates. There are those who believe that more government is better. I am not one of them. I believe that we need to meet the needs of our citizens, but we also sometimes, as the next higher level of government, need to get out of the way and let people that run our local government make decisions because they know what their problems are. They do not needing us telling them what their problems are. And yes, we can provide assistance, and we can provide financial assistance. Actually, I served as the property tax subcommittee chair this past two years, and I served on the Tax Conference Committee. We just about had that tax bill ready to go. We had, we had returning the surplus through removing social security from the taxing stream, we were going to cut the lowest tax rate, we had an increase in local government aid, and the House had a much larger increase for LGA as opposed to county program aid. And I said, "No." Quite frankly, our counties are the ones that have taken care and had to pick up the ball on a lot of the city, state, former state services that were sloughed off onto them. And so we managed to get the CPA equal to the LGA increase that was included in the tax bill. But at the end of the day, the governor and the speaker of the House did not let their members come back to the table to finalize that final tax bill. And so as a result, nothing got done. The projections are that next year, in the following, coming three years, we're looking at over a $12 billion surplus. Last month, the state acquired another $63 million in surplus funds. That means we are taxing you too much. And yes, our costs are gonna go up as state government, your costs are gonna go up as local government, and we're gonna need to keep that in mind as we deal with that. But whether it's to spend that money on some of the capital needs that we have, whether it's to ensure that we dedicate our, our state sales tax revenues on auto parts to the transportation system, whether it's putting out additional highway, trunk highway infrastructure bonds, we need to make sure that we meet the needs of Minnesotans, of all Minnesotans. We are a complicated state with a large metro area and a large rural area. But at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we respond to the needs of our students, of our senior citizens, of our, those who need mental health and healthcare. And, and I look forward to serving you in the four years ahead. I look forward to coming back, to visiting with you. Go to the Senate website, you will find my office number, my, my email address. Anytime you want to, please feel to, free to get in touch with me. I'll be glad to visit with you about your issue, about a problem, what you see as the vision for Minnesota. That's why any of us run for office, is to carry out a vision that is shared by the majority of people within this state. Together, we can make Minnesota better. Thank you very much.
Okay, the last race that we had for this evening, we inquired with Brad Finstead and Jeff Ettinger for U.S. Representative District One. Neither of those candidates were able to come, and neither submitted a written statement. So at this time, I would like to again thank our sponsors for tonight's forum. St. James City, St. James Chamber of Commerce, St. James Public School and Community Education, St. James EDA Rotary and Surtoma. And we'd also like to thank the Watton One County Entertainment Association for allowing us to use their new sound system. And let's end the evening with a big round of applause for all of our candidates. Thank you all for coming, be sure to check out all the live streaming, or, excuse me, not live streaming, but the streaming options that will be able to be watched for replays. Thank you, have a good evening.